...order, put your eyes to the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward provides for the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this main room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in meeting room. If participant sign a sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. President shall approach the podium, state the name and address for the clerk's record, and ask limited remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor if you shall be driven by him, any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the board.
Logan.
Present.
Bassett.
Here.
Camper.
Chris.
Here.
Miller.
Beaver.
Singleton.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Here.
First item this evening is the consideration of approval of the draft minutes of September fourth, morning eighteen. Do the motion in a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Do display the votes.
Um, thank you. When you can ever welcome back, Chris Miller, Singleton, and he has questions.
Uh, the next item is consideration agenda, items two through seven.
Who?
Do you have a motion?
Better.
In a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Do you display the votes?
When you can ever welcome back, Chris Miller, Singleton, and he has questions.
Uh, next item number eight is the public hearing. Uh, this is a presentation discussion of functioning and progress of the Seward economic development plan. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, on September eighteenth, uh, let's see.
Are you August?
No, today's eighteen, August eighteenth, sorry, that was the date. August twenty-first. Uh, the CARC met by its statutory required semi-annual review meeting where they go over the LBA forty program. They look at the balance, they look at all the projects we went up to, uh, made sure they're in conformity with the state stood at you. Uh, and so Marilyn and I sat in on that meeting, conducted it, uh, and for the most part, nobody on CARC had any questions uh, about the progress of the program. They believed everything that we had done over the last, uh, six-month period was in coordination with the plan as drafted by the city council and approved by the voters, so, uh, continue to do well. Uh, we do have the chair of the LBA forty committee, which is Ellen, on the council, and I would, I did share with them also the notes and they saw the notes from the mayor's discussion at the most reasonable degree. They talked about the guidelines and where we'd like to go with that, so we also shared that information with them.
Are there any questions from the council? It is a public hearing, so I can open up the public comment portion of the public hearing, available from the public, which is to comment on item number eight. This is your opportunity. Seeing no one wishing to comment, I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Uh, with that, are there any questions or comments from the council? Need a motion or anything here? Okay, so we need a motion to accept the report.
Let me.
Second.
A motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Do you display the votes?
When you can, welcome back, Chris Miller, Singleton, and he has questions.
Item number nine is consideration of inter-local cooperation agreement with Seward County for prosecution services. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, this was a inter-local agreement that you guys entered into a number of years back. I think it had a three-year term. Um, we just requested that it have a one-year term, uh, and updated, and so, let's see, I believe, it actually expired in June first of two thousand and eighteen, but they've continued on, uh, undertaking that, so that's the way, the date it dates back to. Uh, the only change was we explicitly went into the services provided. Um, let's see, I want to note that for you. Uh, it is in paragraph four, so it talks about, uh, city ordinances violations and things like that. We explicitly, uh, noted, uh, the inclusion of the property maintenance violations, and that gets into discussion we had uh, at the request of Councilman Singleton, and making sure that they are going through with things that we find are in violation of property maintenance code, and it included that. That was gray before, and we specifically sat down and talked, and Kelly also reviewed it, uh, and looked over that inter-local. And so Wendy was fine with that inclusion. We talked about what we thought the caseload. So that's the only change, otherwise they'll roll for another year and we'll just keep doing that.
Any reason why it's just one year?
Let's see here. Um, I think the reason that we wanted to go a year right now, uh, is they wanted to feel out and make sure the caseload on that stuff, because while they haven't done it, we are requesting it and we want to move forward with it. I think it's Ed's opinion that, I mean, he's got one right now ready to start, and so after this is done, we're gonna take our factual information over to them and start getting started on these, since they want to fill that out. Um, so, I, I don't know that there was any other particular reason, um, so. And it's at the same budget amount, it was four thousand before, so we didn't increase it at all.
Any other questions or comments on item number nine? If you're comfortable, someone can use a motion to accept.
I don't know, I don't know if you accept.
The motion is your second.
Second.
Motion in second is being included in discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Do you display the votes?
When you can, welcome back, Chris Miller, Singleton, and he has questions.
Uh, next item number ten, this is a council member request, a discussion of speed limits and alleys. Greg, did you want to?
Uh, just note that we included in your administrative report in the packet that the speed limits have not posted are twenty-five miles per hour in the residential districts, basically all other districts, other than the central business district, they're twenty miles an hour. So, that's the information we have, so. Councilman Singleton, this was your request, I'll let you address it first.
We had, I had a, well, I guess, one pretty, pretty long conversation with a gentleman on South Columbia. When, it usually is the time of year when, uh, the college kids come back and they move in, and, uh, they're using high speeds in the alley, and, uh, and this gentleman even had the police officers over there addressing the issue because they still didn't slow down, and he went out there and put a speed bump out there, everybody thought with the liability of putting his own speed bump in, it would be too much of a liability risk on himself, so, he asked if we could bring it to the council, discuss it, and, you know, twenty miles an hour down alley, I think it's too fast, especially in, especially in some of the older parts of town where the alleys are very narrow. Um, and some of the easement with the poles are right there as well, that you could almost come into contact, and all the children that are at play, um, behind the houses in the alleys, and, you know, I'd hate to see a, a young child walk out behind a building or garage and get hit. Um, well, I'm just saying that I, I bring to the council for discussion, I just think twenty miles an hour down alleys is too fast. When we have it heavily populated in all areas of Seward where there's alleys with children. And, so I, so I told them, I bring to the council, let us, told them, Greg, that, you know, let's let the council decide if we can change anything on the ordinance, or if everybody thinks we're gonna leave it just as is, but that's as much as.
Does any other city regulate that?
I think in most, there's always a default. The question is, the default usually lies on the designated roadways, on the state statute, not the high, which they refer to as highways, um, that if it's not posted, you default to twenty-five miles an hour. We include alleys, as you see in our drafted ordinance, or our current ordinance. I'm sure you can change it to whatever you like, just to note correction to, uh, what Councilman Singleton was referencing. If he's over near South Columbia, that's actually twenty-five in that alley, not twenty, as he was pointing out. So it'd be a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. We did bring it up at department head meeting, and I think the, for the most part, I think the consideration by street department is if you wanted to provide signage or any other element, so speed laws or anything else, if there's cost concern and where do you put them and not put them. Uh, and then from the police enforcement side, and I know we're lucky enough to have Assistant Chief Peters here, so maybe he can even speak to it a little bit. Chief Baldwin noted that that's a, for speed purposes, like actual speed limits, that's a tough call in an alley, because to actually radar them, you're probably sitting at the end of the alley staring at them, and they're coming right at you because of the narrowness of our alleys. Um, he also noted, though, I mean, we could look at directing it, and I, I don't want to speak for, for chief over there, he does want to speak to some of this, but we can also look at prosecuting for other things like reckless driving or other lower-end, uh, items, you know, if they're spitting rocks or doing other things like that, uh, depending what kind of alley it is, so. And, and then the other one is you can, we can amend this ordinance, you can specifically call out alleys and say it's fifteen if you want. That's an easy draft for Kelly, I guess, so, but, it's, what's the effective way to deal with the situation, because?
Well, the, the, the effective way to deal with it is so people know, because most people don't even know. And, 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 no, we don't want to do signage, because that's a ton of money, you're gonna sign every alley or non-alley.
Well, it sounds like this is an isolated instance, because I've talked to the guy on that too, and, and he says it's just, it's one, these one individuals that are doing it, and sooner or later, you would think they'd get caught, so, but, I don't know, this is about the first time I ever heard of that over the years.
If I'm an enforcement standpoint, I mean, you know, we can always bring it to the attention of the police department, and if they want to more frequent that area and, and monitor it, you know, they sure can, as part of their normal, um, the normal, uh, you know, responsibilities. And if it happens more frequently at a certain time of day, or in certain businesses, like Friday night on the weekend versus a Tuesday morning, the more specific we can be on that will definitely help with the enforcement side of it. Um, I grew up on, on Columbia with an alley, um, and we did use the alley. We do, you know, have used it quite a bit in the past. I can just tell you, it is hard to get real fast going down the alley, just because it's a block long. I mean, by the time you get up to twenty-five, you're very slowing down, because you're gonna be hitting a, a street, and, and usually alleys don't have very good visibility, because you have buildings, especially in the older parts where you have the alleys, a lot of times garages go right up to the alley, um, and they build actually on the property lines, and so, I think it's common sense, you would want to slow down and be careful coming in, especially going out of alleys. And a lot of times people honk, just to make sure that people know that they're coming, but that's my own experience growing up there, yeah.
Cause ju- just a question, can we do this? Uh, I mean, obviously there's a concern in this one specific area. Uh, I mean, can the city send a letter to the residents who back up to that alley and just note that there's been concerns about speeds in this alley? And this is the speed of the hour.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's more things can be done, is, is, is sending, uh, some, some, some form reminder, whether it's a letter or, or a flyer in the door, but also, I think, just having, making the police department aware of it, so that when they're in the area, they can pay closer attention to that. And if it is college kids, I don't know, if they, at some point they graduate, and maybe then, at some point, right? And then maybe that problem, i- if it's, if it's specific to certain individuals, maybe that problem naturally corrects itself, but, um.
Yeah, another one that they might do is start driving up and down that alley occasionally with the cruiser. You know, that way you're showing your presence, and maybe that'll show them that, hey, you're getting watched. Maybe that would help a little bit.
Can you make that whoop-whoop sound that I like a lot?
If you make a whoop-whoop sound, I'll.
That'd be great.
That certainly sounds.
That way they're just showing that, hey, you're being, being watched, maybe that'll slow them down, you know, at different times.
Sure. Do you have, was there a particular time, like on the weekends, or is there high-traffic times?
He already didn't say it was all different, different times.
Sure.
And sometimes on the weekend it's worse, because the kids are, you know, out of school.
Right, right.
Chief, I know that it's kind of, we have all the details here, but are you guys familiar with where this is? Or do you know roughly what the council was talking about?
I, I know, what's the address again on Columbia?
Eight, is it eight forty-six or eight?
On South Columbia?
Yeah, South Columbia. It's, uh, like eight hundred, I can tell you the name afterwards.
Okay. That's getting way down there.
Uh, it's pretty far down, too, that's the other thing.
Which, you know, I certainly think we can do some high-visibility control. Um, speeding through the alleys is certainly not, uh, something we've really seen any complaints on, other than, uh, Councilman Singleton.
That might be the only alley that's accessed right there anyway, on Columbia, South Columbia? I think that might be the only alley. That full, full block. It's like, I know it's almost like a block and a half or two blocks.
One goes up the other way, too.
Yeah, yeah, it's like a, it's only one.
The one that goes east and west?
Yeah, or no, north and south.
Oh, that, okay.
It's north and south. Vision Clinic, and then it basically is cornered to the west. South and west, right there? I can't think of, I can tell you the resident's name afterward.
Okay.
Sure, um, prepared to patrol and be concerned with it.
Yeah, certain times of night, maybe the weekends, you know, occasionally, and maybe that'll slow them down for a while.
Is there anything else on the second?
No, I, I did, yeah, I just wanted to be discussed and see what we.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And then we'll go on to item number eleven, this is consideration of resolution approving a loan between the city of Seward Electric Fund and the General Fund for rail campus real estate purchase, unless it's payoff loan at Union Bank.
Greg?
Uh, this was an item that we had tabled a few weeks back, and then was requested to be brought up at this meeting by Councilman Camper. Uh, we did follow up with our budget assistants and auditors, uh, with Terry Galloway and his crew. Uh, we also looked through some of the things ourselves, and bringing Nick on, uh, we briefed him on the, on the item a few times and tried to get some of his thoughts. And I think the recommendation coming out, we can have, answer whatever questions you want. I think the recommendation in talk, internally talking amongst the administration was to, uh, if we feel really strongly that we don't want to do the loan, which I think is the preference of the council, is just to do the transfer, our recommendation would be to go ahead and approve the loan document, and then task myself and the finance director, Nick Wolf, with reporting to the finance committee to find you the way that that comes back around, uh, so we don't have to worry about it during the audit. But we can also leave it, because I also, I mean, we asked the question, what happens if you leave it? What if we don't do the loan? And they said, and it's just over there, and, and I noted in their audit, and then that note comes back to you guys, that you, yeah, we, we note that, we did it. And so, uh, that's kind of where they left it. We asked, we asked and inquired about, you know, what was the discrepancy between the first time that you guys did it, a number of years ago, uh, and this time, and, and one of them, Terry kind of noted that the biggest problem with that was your cash position at the time. That was one of the elements that was involved in that budgeting season, along with, I believe, increasing your franchise fees, is to try and bail yourself out from going negative throughout your fiscal year.
Cause I think the question, though, is why, I mean, what I, what I was understanding from this is it was, correct me if I'm wrong, it was from Galloway's group that said we had to do a loan. And the question was, well, we did the four hundred thousand dollar transfer, you didn't tell us we had a loan in that.
Yes.
So, we know why we transferred it, because we had a cash position here, or a problem, but he didn't say it had to be a loan then, what made this one a loan versus that one wasn't a loan? That, that's what the question was.
I think we sort of asked that, I mean, Bonnie was in on the, the conversation, um, and.
I, I mean, if the issue is nothing more than it's gonna be a note in, uh, in an audit report, so be it.
Yeah, we inquired whether there's any issue in our STP funds, federal highway dollars, you know, it's not a roads project, but nevertheless, is it gonna, are we gonna be fined, anything else? And they said, no, it's just not, for accounting purposes, we prefer that you note it and then put it back in the business fund, and and we went around and round, I mean, we walked through the statute that I had cited where it said surplus funds, the electrical, water, business funds can be transferred to the general fund, and I think part of the problem that, that they felt was, well, if you fully understand the restricted fund and the levy formulas that we just completed for our budget this year, uh, they note that in your previous one, you had filled those in and put them in. The four hundred was part of your budgeting and planning for the year, versus this one. And we felt like we had done our due diligence in asking, we don't know exactly what's gonna go on with the rail campus. Somebody could come tomorrow and say, hey, we want to buy the whole rail campus for five million dollars, and, well, we didn't budget for that. We gotta figure out something to do in our budget for that. And so that's when we asked the question, one, can we do it? And two, can we do it as an amendment to the budget? And it was me and Bonnie's understanding at the time of budgeting last fiscal year, so over a year ago, that that would have been the route that we went. And then when we asked them again this year, well, why can't we do that? They said, well, it's because of that formula, you didn't have it in there. And I know that's not the best answer, but and then talking to Nick, I mean, we can work with the finance committee to bring you away, if that's the, if that's, what, what I would like to see is, is direction from this body, what you want to do, and if you're definitive that you want to transfer that money from the electric fund and put it in the general fund, and that is the end of it, then task Nick and myself with ensuring that happens, with done all the formulas, so everything's fine, and the auditor goes, okay, that's fine. Because on the backend, we can do this. We can put in a transfer in your next budget, and you're taking one to pay the other one off, because you're on both ends of the transaction.
I don't want to speak for the rest of the council, but our understanding from the get-go, I think, was that this was gonna be a transfer, and the loan document showed up as a surprise.
Okay.
I'm just fine with it, just a final transfer. And the, I don't know if that the exact words that Mr. Galloway used was, he said, doing it as a transfer is not a clean accounting transaction.
He wants document, the loan, the last audit, it's just six of one half dozen the other. The loan document is a document that they can look to and say, here is where the council, uh, is loaning this money from here to here. We all know it's not gonna be paid back, it just, it shows a written record of, of that transfer, because we don't necessarily have a transfer document, per se, that they could point to that represents that action. And so before, it was done in a way where it was.
I'm just saying, Mr. Galloway recommended the four hundred thousand dollar transfer.
But that was part.
Didn't bring a loan and say, we need documentation that a transfer took place. I wish Terry was here to answer for himself, because that's what I want to answer to him, but.
I mean, why, why?
But it was, I think it was, it wasn't, it was something we had contemplated.
You guys, tr- the transfer of the four hundred thousand was in your budget.
So this is not in the budget?
And this was not in the budget, even though we had asked the question, because I remember speaking to you directly last year. We can pull up the video, and we'd asked the question, if this pivots on the rail campus and they decide to do something one way or the other throughout the year. Again, the example of somebody comes and wants to buy it, or they want to pin it on the infrastructure, are we allowed and are we able to amend the budget and advance that? Because the, the paperwork's here, the paperwork is, um, you guys made the motion in a public meeting, and that is the paper trail that shows the action that was done that caused us to transfer the funds.
So if we have this document, who reaches a loan document, which says we want to pay it back to the electric fund, and we don't, then we get paid for that on the audit.
But you can also, again, if we find a way for it to go into the front end of the budget, just like you did the front one before, and we can say, see, we got the levy formula to work, based on your restricted funds and everything else, then you can go, okay, fine, we'll do it that way, void the loan. I mean, that's, I'm trying to task a way so that Nick can just find a so- solution, where the auditor goes, that's fine. Uh, again, I've asked it six ways this Sunday, it makes no sense to me how we did two of the exact same thing, and we're getting two different responses. And I wish I was here for the first one, because I was not. Wasn't here when you sat down and talked and contemplated how you did the original four hundred thousand dollars.
It was him, Terry Gallagher, just standing up here and saying, transfer four hundred thousand dollars, and that was about the end of it.
Whether it was a resolution or an ordinance, whatever we did to do the transfer, that's how it was.
I don't, I think you did it within your budget, that was it. Approving the budget caused the transfer to happen. Versus here, we did the motion and, and had the, the agenda item and discussed it in open session very specifically, and then we did it, and then they said we couldn't.
We'll figure it out with Terry where you want to go, we just need a way.
If you, yeah, just tell us what you want to do specifically, and we will make it work.
But just, just to frigging muddy the waters, do you feel more comfortable if we do this loan thing?
Do I feel more comfortable? Yes.
Did the loan that you want to ask you pay back?
That was just what I was looking at. Why, why are we throwing maturity two years out of it? Then if our intent is we're not gonna pay it back, why don't we mature it in thirty-nine ninety-nine?
You can amend it however you like.
Or can next year, we could budget for it and then take.
You're on, you're on both ends of the agreement, it is, it is.
We, we are, but how does it affect our budget next year? We've got a loan that we've gotta pay back.
They're not paying.
That's gotta go into our budget somewhere.
So it's a two-year loan, so then your next year's budget doesn't go in there at all, because you're not paying anything next year.
But the following year, how do we, what if we don't pay it back?
Then I believe it just shows up as you didn't pay it back, and so your, your creditor will have to follow up with you on that one.
So the auditor will come after us, because we have no documentation.
Well, your documentation is the loan.
If we do the loan.
Unless we structure repayment in the budget for two years.
And again, the question being, this is what I'm saying, if you do do this, and you really want it to be a, your intent is it to be a transfer, not to be a loan, then approve this tonight, if you want my recommendation, approve this tonight, task Nick and myself with finding a way, working with the finance committee, to show you over the next year, going to the next budget, here's what we did, it works within the formula, the auditors all say it's fine, here's the solution to make a transfer. And we'll make it a transfer, and we'll make it work. I thought I had that when we did the budget last year, when they said, yes, you can do it, just amend the budget, and then they told us something contrary. I cannot fix that. So I want to find a solution to implement your intent, and if your intent is for it to be a transfer, this is how I believe to fi- to do that.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead with whatever processes need to be done to make it a transfer of four hundred thousand dollars.
Forty?
Forty, excuse me, four hundred eighty thousand dollars. No, we have, it's a resolution, sorry.
Need to clarify whether you want to sign this or not introduce the resolution.
But it's a resolution, the law agreement, so if you want to approve the law agreement, you don't have to introduce a resolution.
Or if we don't want to approve it, we don't introduce the resolution.
If you don't want to approve it, then don't do anything.
Okay, then.
And that's fine.
And then we have to come up with something else next time to transfer the money?
The money's transferred, the action has happened, it is incurred.
Okay, come on.
This is just paperwork at this point.
It's been paperwork, it's been three years, it's.
Yep. Everything here has been authorized and handled in public. It's the question of, and again, maybe all you get is in your audit, you have a note, and you go, okay, thank you, duly noted, and then you move on.
So I guess, at this point, are we, are we moving on to item number twelve? Or does someone want to do something with item number eleven? Last chance. See no action on item eleven, we'll move on to item number twelve, administrative report.
Very quickly, um, uh, this will be an item for next time, but I want to note it now. Uh, as you saw, we completed the milling over on the Burlington Northern Highway thirty-four crossing and smoothed that out. Uh, we continue to be contacted by Burlington Northern about the status of the Elm Street crossing. They did a little bit of work over there. But ultimately, they, they want to, as part of a full redecking of the entire crossing, both at Highway thirty-four and Elm Street, where they'll come back in and raise their rail up, provide, do decking between the two rail lines, and then do new approaches. They want to know whether we want to keep that open, or if we want to, if they're gonna repair it, they're requesting some assistance financially to repair the Elm Street one, not the highway one, the state will assist on the highway one.
I think the appropriate thing to do is to go ask the business owners, landowners right there, if they want to open or if they want to close. So, the Body Shop and, you know, Merle's Garden Center, you know, I know they all use that very heavily, but I, I think that's the appropriate way, is to ask the citizens and the owners.
Yeah, if we're gonna go into more detail, I can, I'm just noting that they continue to ask and they want action by us. And so at some point, this body needs to give them direction of whether we wanna close it, or whether we wanna fix it. And then we have to sort out how much we're gonna pay if we're gonna help assist to fix it.
And did they say how long it's gonna take?
E- even if they did, I'm gonna be honest, even if they did, I wouldn't.
Even hold.
No. They were no assistance on what we did last, this most recent round, that was entirely between the city and the state.
Are they gonna have the city do it?
No.
We won't be involved.
I just wanna make sure to find out if they'll give us a price on what it costs.
They, they have actually quoted a price, I think, again, we're going into a lot of detail, just throw it out there, it's about fifty-four thousand dollars to do the replacement on Elm Street Crossing. But we don't have a contractual agreement with them, so I don't know what portion we're gonna cover, or there's no offer back and forth, so. But we could go inform the businesses over there, and then bring that up as an agenda item, probably, at the next meeting. Um, and then the other one's just that Jake, uh, came on duty as city engineer right after, uh, this meeting two weeks ago. Already doing an amazing job, he's done an assessment of a massive number of pieces of infrastructure, found a number of issues that we need to get addressed. Uh, he did a full survey of the golf course and the drainage, uh, up and downstream from it already, and started coming up with some conceptual ideas. Just start looking at that for assistance along Augusta, uh, some stuff from Plum Creek Park and the crossing under Carol Kay, that really large box culvert is, there's work that needs to be done on that immediately. So, uh, we're, we're keeping him really busy, and he's doing a lot of great work, and he's assisting a lot in finishing up the design and, uh, the project on East Seward. So, big, big, big pickup for us, it's worked out really well so far. Anything else?
Any questions for Greg? If not, anything, a motion to accept the report.
Move.
Second. Motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Chris Miller, Singleton.
Do you have any future requests for council items or administrative action? Sing them. Hey, Jonathan, do you have upcoming events to announce? You're all just standing between us and the ground, so take your time.
Thanks, thank you. Uh, we do, we're partnering with Southeast Community College, like we have in the past, uh, Career as a Manufacturing Day. So we're really grateful for our partnership with that and the community. We also wanna say thank you for the partnership on a night flight, uh, through the Sioux Municipal Airport, so.
Awesome, thanks, Jonathan. Uh, are there any other announcements, uh, if you can, a motion to adjourn?
No.
A motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Chris Miller, Singleton.
All right, thanks, everybody, have a good evening.